This is the call, this is the meeting to order. Could we do a roll call, please?
Sandra Bradford.
Here.
Barry Altshuler.
Here.
Leah Colister-Lazari.
Here.
Katie Carum.
Here.
Erin Chan Ding.
Here.
Steve Wang.
Here.
Diana Clapton.
I would just rise and join me for the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic, which stands on mission, under God, in his soul, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and welcome to our post-St. Patrick's Day, March 15 meeting. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Winkelman right away for a special presentation.
Yes, thank you, Sandra. We have established a tradition in our school district where we start our board meetings with having one of our students from one of the schools throughout the district join us and share some insight and perspective about their experiences. Tonight, we have 5th grader Leah Diaz from Sunny Hill Elementary, so welcome Leah.
Hi, I'm Leah Diaz from Sunny Hill, and Mr. Bradford selected me to represent Sunny Hill to you today. Thank you for this honor. I'm happy to be here. I'm on the principal's advisory, and I have been able to help Sunny Hill with new ideas throughout the year. It has been a great year. The opportunities at Sunny Hill are fun, so I like to be involved. I participate in GEMS, a girl empowerment group, running club, track, principal's advisory, the announcements, Boys and Girls Club, and special events. All of these extra opportunities teach us to exercise, be more connected, and even stretch our comfort zones. We have had a number of character-strong highlights during school for this year. Early in the year, we celebrated our focus on kindness and respect by having a relay race, even staff members participated. In October, we celebrated kindness with the glow party. We turned off all the lights in the multipurpose room, passed out glow sticks and necklaces to everyone, and had a dance party. We also had an all-school bingo another time. We celebrated everyone, and we also give specific awards to students who show a lot of the chosen character trait. I'm looking forward to our cooperative creation that is in the hallway right now. No one knows what it could be, but we are all contributing to it. In class, we do a lot of essay and projects to show what we have learned. Just last week, 5th graders had a space project with the gallery walk. Ms. Morales invited staff members and parents to come see our projects that revealed our learnings about outer space. We also showed how the planets orbit with their bodies. Earlier in the year, we hosted a Native American fair. Coming up, I'm looking forward to going to the middle school. We all get to visit it before school lets out for summer. I'm also looking forward to the field days and grade recognition. What I love about Sunny Hill is that it feels like a safe place to be. We are learning and having fun at the same time. We have so many traditions. We go to Camp Jambalaya. We all say the pledge together outside on the first day of school. We celebrate successes, and we work hard. Thank you again for this opportunity, and thank you to my family for supporting me all the time.
Leah, that was an outstanding report. Very impressive. You listed, I don't even know how many things at the beginning that you're involved in, and you commented about, you know, stretching yourself, right? Getting out of your comfort zone. One of those things, something that you tried for the first time? And what was your experience?
Probably at Camp Jambalaya when... At Camp Jambalaya, I was really scared to go on the zip line, but then I got the courage to do it, and after I did it, I felt like I wanted to do it more.
Awesome. Way to face something and get that firsthand experience of being able to overcome. That's awesome. Thank you. Board, any questions for Leah?
Which middle school are you going to be going to next year?
I'm going to go to Prairie.
Excited to go to middle school, or you?
Yeah, I'm really excited because I want to try something like... Because I'm really excited to go to middle school, but I'm also kind of nervous.
Understandable.
You'll do great.
Yeah.
Prairie's a very welcoming place, so.
Try out the student basket. That was something we talked about last.
That's true.
I was going to say, I'm going to let Erin ask the running questions because I know she's super excited. But what about field day? What's your favorite event there?
Probably when we have like sponges and then we go put them in water and then try to make it to the other side.
Yeah, that's a fellow. Awesome.
We're bonding, you guys. We can do that. That sounds really fun.
Oh, there you go.
That sounds great, actually.
Yeah.
Do you have anybody you want to introduce who's here with you today? It seems like there's like a large crowd for you.
My dad is here, my sister, and my mom, and my two teachers in the back, and my principal, Mr. Bradford.
That's great.
I'll be very proud.
Indeed.
I get why you have such a big fan club, Leah. Yeah, and I heard you talk about the Principal's Advisory Council and GEMS. What were a couple of ideas that you came up with for our principal here?
We came up with this idea to like make videos about like our expectations, and it was really fun, and I had fun making the videos with some of my other classmates.
That sounds awesome. What about GEMS, what some of the girls' empowerment activities you did?
We went to the animal shelter, and we gave them blankets, and it was really fun seeing all the animals and giving them their blankets, too.
That sounds so fine. A caring thing to do. And the obligatory running question. Your... Do you want to know something about running?
Were you thinking about doing the cross country team or running or the track team in High School Middle School?
Definitely.
Do you have a favorite event or distance? See, now we're on your tag team in the running question. Are you sprinter, or do you like more distance, or do you do field events?
I mostly... I like sprinting, but I also like taking my time, too.
I feel that.
So Peter Dash and the marathon, right?
Well, thank you again. How about another round of applause for Leah? Leah, would it be okay if we took a picture together? And we have a certificate and a bag of Barrington goodies for you as well. Would it be okay if we took a picture together? All right.
Can you give us a thumbs up? New principal.
Turn it up. I was almost thinking about bringing the succulent.
It'd be great down right there on the table.
It's been a couple months. It's been a while, so it's been even more than that.
Come on up, photographers.
One. Take your couple, always. Come on up.
All right, it's always tough to follow. My report is next. I've got a very grief report. I was really impressed by Leah.
I loved her, all the ideas that she's generating, the female empowerment group and spreading kindness, really good examples of empowering personal excellence in every learner every day. We, as a board, did have planned some CPR training. We unfortunately have to reschedule our CPR training, but we cannot. We're a little bit late, so.
You missed it.
We will be rescheduling soon. And another thing I want to mention is that, you know, given it's social activity a while, Steve, I'm going to ask if you can reignite our March Madness, only for fun.
It's on. It's on.
All right, that's great. And then last, I'll just mention the place to be this week is at the polls, especially for you civic students back there. We've got a lot of local positions that are open, and so get out there and vote. It's our civic duty. All right, so with that, it's now come to the time of reporting our meeting. We set aside for public comment. The board values your thoughts and opinions. We will ensure that all voices are respected and heard in accordance with board equity statement that states that we recognize, embrace, and defend the identities, abilities, and voices of our diverse school community. And the board has agreed to the rules set forth in the policy in which the public commenters have agreed to abide. This is a board meeting that occurs in public. It is not a public meeting. Public comment is not a conversation and does not necessarily reflect the views of the board. If any comments require further attention, we will ask Dr. Winkelman to follow up and report back to the board. So with that, Erin Linville.
Hello, superintendent.
I think you just talked, you don't have to turn it on.
Hello? Hello, superintendent and members of the board. My name is Erin Linville. My children attend lines and station. I'm making public comment about the proposed school year 26-27 calendar, the most significant change of which is starting school earlier in August in order to have a full week off at Thanksgiving. I really appreciate the discussion at the last meeting about forecasting the calendar forward and considering broader stakeholder engagement before voting. Thank you. As stated in the February memo to the board, one reason a new calendar is being proposed to adopt, and I quote, "A full week off for Thanksgiving aligns with calendars of neighboring districts better supporting the needs of families and the broader community." Six districts were listed that either closed school for the full week or limit the week for parent-teacher conferences, yet only three of these districts are within 30 minutes of the district office, so I don't think that all should be considered as neighboring districts. When I examined 10 districts within 30 minutes of the 220 district office, I could not find a district that has a long weekend in October, a long weekend in early November, and the full week of Thanksgiving off for students. Therefore, I'm concerned that the proposed calendar lacks continuity of learning for students because it has so many breaks. The districts that I looked at were Fox River Grove 3, Eptocatistic Trip 102, Crystal Lake 47, Cary 25, Lake Zurich 95, Palatine 15, Kildare 96, Rolling Meadows 214, Arlington Heights 25, and Elgin 46. I emailed you this information last week, so you have it for reference. The other reasons listed for considering a different calendar were childcare challenges for staff and low attendance during Thanksgiving week. I asked for the attendance rates of Thanksgiving week versus the rest of the school year, and I'd still love to see that. I'm waiting for a response. I also encourage you to consider that families also have childcare challenges when school's not in session. In summary, I think it's important to have a school calendar that prioritizes consistent, high-quality time on learning in order to empower excellence in every learner. The current proposal for school year 26-27 doesn't accomplish this and is not in alignment with nearby districts. I appreciate you listening. Thank you.
Thanks, Erin. Thank you. Next up is Marcy Cole.
My name is Marcy Cole. I'm a case manager at Barrington High School, a concerned taxpayer, a community member, and a proud parent of three BHS graduates. Having lived in the community for over 30 years, I've always been proud of our schools and the world-class education we provide. Tonight, I want to express my strong support for the current case management model at BHS for students with IEPs, which is progressive and has been highly successful. Recently, my colleagues and I were informed that our case manager roles were being eliminated, requiring us to return to the classroom while still managing student caseloads. As a former classroom teacher and case manager for 13 years, I know firsthand how difficult it is to balance both roles effectively. It's essentially two jobs. Two years ago, I was given the opportunity to focus solely on case management, allowing me to support students and families fully. When administration first implemented this new model two years ago, they believed that case managers should be part of the student services team, and those administrators were right. Daily, we collaborate with our teams, counselors, assistant principals, associate principals, social workers, psychologists, and nurses, all to the benefit of students. That is impossible to do when we are in the classroom. Along with my colleagues, we built a program that truly serves our students and families in the best way possible. On a daily basis, case managers handle situations that come up and are able to address them immediately, providing the proper support to all parties, including students, parents, and other stakeholders. Our job involves so much more than just writing legally defendable IEPs. Under the current model, we have the same students for all four years, and much of our time is spent building relationships and delivering direct services to students. Just recently, I had a student struggling with attendance and engagement. I was able to put several interventions in place and properly track the data for that student, and now that student is back on track. Reverting to the old model will significantly limit our availability and effectiveness in supporting students and parents, and we would be going backward to an old method instead of current best practices. Administrators, with all due respect, I urge you to honor the current contract to ensure we continue providing the best support to our most vulnerable students. To the board members, I hope what I've said here tonight causes you to pause and question how this change came to be. I would challenge you to dig deeper into whether this change is best for students. Due to limited time, I could only touch on a fraction of what we do to support families and students under this current model, so I wrote a more exhaustive list for you to review, which I will pass out. Lastly, I have one year left until retirement, so the reason I'm here tonight is not self-serving. It is because I wholeheartedly believe in this model. I have seen the successes. Thank you.
Thank you, Marcy. You can give them to me. I'll make sure to pause. Next up is Debbie LaCombe. Am I saying that right, Debbie?
Yes. Thank you. Good evening. My name is Debbie LaCombe, and I have been a teacher for 36 years, with 26 of my last years spent at Barrington High School as a special service math teacher. At the end of this year, I will be retiring. While I personally will not be affected by any changes to the special service next year, I believe I'm in a unique position to offer insight how these changes will impact both special service teachers and, most importantly, their students. Two years ago, with the current contract, special service teachers transferred from teaching five classes and managing a caseload to teaching five classes with a hall duty. This shift aligned our responsibilities more closely with those general education teachers. At the same time, the administration removed five special education teachers from classrooms to create a case manager model, where those teachers took on the primary responsibility of managing IEPs at Barrington High School. This change has had a profound impact, not just for me, but for my students. For the first time in my career, I've had the same time and resources that general education teachers have always had. With this additional time, I've been able to collaborate with my fellow math colleagues to ensure continuity in the curriculum and provide common assessment with special education and general education classes. I've been able to develop a curriculum that is both challenging and differentiates to support our complex learners. I've been able to prepare engaging, high-quality lessons that include student choice and foster deeper learning. I've been able to provide additional supports to students, ensuring they get the need and help that they need, and I've been able to participate in professional development beyond just IEP compliance, allowing me to improve as a teacher and integrate new technology into my instruction. Prior to this change, my ability to effectively teach was significantly hindered by the demands of managing a caseload. The time required for IEPs, emails, parent meetings, legal paperwork, and providing testing accommodations, often while actively teaching another class, was nearly equal to the time I spent actually teaching. Teaching in special education often means teaching multiple subjects. I've had the privilege of staying within the math department of BHS. Many of my colleagues do not. Special education teachers may teach English one year, history the next, and then science or health, or all within the same career and sometimes even within the same year. Because of this, having dedicated time to collaborate with content teams is essential. Our professional development should not be limited to IEP training. We need time to grow as educators, just like our general education colleagues. I urge you to consider dissolving the case manager model. If we are committed to doing what is best for students, then we must recognize that this model is what's best for them. It allows special education teachers to be better educators. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Kylie Humbert.
To the tech guy in the back, the feed is not going through at home for my husband to watch. I'm just kidding.
The thing isn't working. Like, the feed isn't showing up.
Okay. All right. Hi, guys. My name is Kylie Humbert. I am a mom to two kiddos in District. Tonight, I come to you in hopes of addressing the district's lack of investment in training our amazing teachers and support staff when it comes to crisis prevention intervention training, CPI, especially for those within this special ed setting. For those unfamiliar, what is CPI certified? It's a training done annually, and it focuses on a lot of things, but for, you know, ease of use, early intervention and prevention, de-escalation techniques, physical safety techniques, and post-crisis support. We see these commonly used in special education settings. Why does CPI training matter? One, it reduces risk of injury to staff and to students. Two, it helps us comply with state laws. Three, it creates a safe environment for our students, faculty, and staff. Four, it equips the staff and teachers with confidence on how to handle crisis moments without fully escalating the situation. After scouring the website, board policies, student handbooks, it's unclear what staff members are required here at D220 to have CPI training. It would be nice to know. Even a few of our current job postings don't say if CPI cert is required. As BOE members, I assume you're aware that not all of the aides in this strive or best program are CPI trained or certified. I'll repeat, CPI training is not even done for every person who sits inside a best and strive class in our district. These are the kids who exhibit these behaviors frequently. I'd like the admin, because I don't know that the board is aware, to stop asking teachers to do unsafe things. Teachers and staff, we see you. Thank you for putting your safety on the line for our kids. We parents have your back. Parents at home, you need to ask your case manager, is your child's one-on-one aide or the people in their class CPI certified? Ask tomorrow. This is best practice everywhere, but it's not here. This matters. The lack of CPI training leads to errors in which staff members escalate behaviors rather than de-escalate them, putting staff and students at risk. These aren't eight-year-olds. These are 18-year-olds a lot of the time. We can't do that to our staff. If students continue to display mal-adapted behaviors throughout time in school, they will almost certainly not get community-based services once they're outside of our D220 home. That's a story for a different day, though. So please, find out how many teachers and their aides are CPI certified. Know the numbers. It's not enough. Look, I hit time today, guys. I didn't even do jokes, that's why. All right, bye, guys.
All right, so I know we've got our special ed update coming up in May, so maybe you can give us an update on where we are with this.
Absolutely, we can do that.
Great. And we have calendar on our agenda tonight, so we'll talk more about that. So with that, we'll close our public comment, and I'll turn it back over to you, Dr. Winkelman, for your report.
Okay, thank you. All right, for my report tonight, I have a few slides. I'd like to start with some recognition for our students at Barrington High School. We have 12 students displayed on the screen that have completed the additional criteria. You may recall earlier this year, we had the semifinalists. We now have... These 12 students are confirmed as national merit finalists. We are very fortunate in District 220. Any student that earns this designation as a finalist, they represent the top 1% of students throughout the United States, and we are fortunate. We actually have 12 students right here in Barrington that have earned that designation. And I know we have our high school principal, Mr. McWilliams, that's here tonight as well. Steve, anything that you would like to share on behalf of the students at the high school?
So just to kind of reiterate, so the semifinalists have to go through a rigorous vetting process. Part of that is taking the SAT, getting a qualifying score. I think one of the pieces that's really great for these students is a lot of organizations and Fortune 500 businesses give scholarships to students that earn these awards. So occasionally, we get updates. At this point, I've seen four students that have earned very nice scholarships from companies and organizations to help fund their post-secondary careers, and also, a lot of times, colleges and universities recognize these students by giving them presidential scholarships and such. So their hard work pays off and pays forward in their post-secondary planning. Thanks for recognizing them, Dr. Winkelman. It's a huge accomplishment for those students.
Of course, and they couldn't be here tonight, but let's give them a round of applause. Thank you, Mr. McWilliams. My next slide, I have an announcement for our executive director of student services position. So annually, in the springtime, as an organization, we incorporate transitions, we begin our future planning work. This takes many shapes and forms, right? So parents may be thinking about programs for their students. Our students at the secondary level start to engage in course selection process. We certainly think about supports for students moving between levels. That's part of our work. I saw the information that went out for 5th to 6th grade transition. We heard Leah, our student tonight, talk about the events that are planned during the spring. We also start to think about teaching assignments for our staff for next year to meet our needs, and we also contemplate administrative roles. And so tonight, I am excited to announce that we are recommending Dr. Jordan Anderson as the executive director of student services. Jordan brings a strong educational background, having earned several graduate-level degrees, a master's from St. Xavier in curriculum and instruction, a second master's degree from Concordia in educational administration, and most recently, Jordan earned her doctorate from Concordia in educational leadership. In addition to her education, Jordan brings varied administrative experiences and roles that she has held both in District 220 as well as previous work outside of Barrington. This role allows Jordan to really build upon and enhance the impact that her leadership provides throughout the district with the increased responsibilities that the executive director position brings with it. So this position is one of the items that's listed on the personnel report for the board's consideration. Next slide, please. So after the start of the year, we started our work really in the first phase with our Transform 220, which is the design phase. So our Transform 220 team has been very hard at work over the past several weeks. Numerous meetings have been held, and as we begin the first phase of design for our referendum projects, these focus groups and discussions, they provide an opportunity to clearly define the objectives for each project and consider various design possibilities. This phase also includes considerations of challenges, opportunities, inspirational images, and in some cases, tours of other facilities and learning spaces. Design will continue over the next several months, and we are planning to have a board update later this spring. I will say it was really rewarding today. As the board knows, prior to stepping into the superintendent position, my former role required a lot of leadership and time on Build 220. I was able to meet with our student council students today during their normal meeting time in a space in the cafeteria that we had talked about four years ago as a concept, just like we're doing right now with all these exciting new projects. And I just asked the students, I took advantage of the opportunity, I just, after, you know, the formal part of our meeting, I just said, you know, what do you guys think about this concept of having these breakout rooms? And they said, we love it. We regularly meet here. It's an opportunity for us to stay in the cafeteria and not have to leave the cafeteria and so forth, and it just created that space for them during the day. I thought that was really cool. I made that connection. I can't wait to see what the design teams and the work that we do over the next year start to imagine new learning spaces for our students so we can make those a reality as well. Next slide. Next slide, please. So I wanted to spend a minute, you know, there's been conversations here locally, as well as throughout the state, really about cell phones in schools. Recently, though, Governor Pritzker and our legislators, they proposed new legislation to ban cell phones during classroom instruction here in Illinois. There are currently eight states that already have policy about restricting or prohibiting cell phones in schools. The latest legislation, it is putting a timestamp on that, much like legislation that we were talking about last year about kindergarten and an expectation to build kindergarten programming throughout the state. On this topic, the policy would prohibit use by 26, '27 school year. It would include secure storage guidelines and also providing some limited exceptions. You know, digging into it a little bit, those are really around safety matters when those exceptions would be applicable. So, you know, we're continuing to have the conversations here, if you go to the next slide, on the same topic, but we've taken a little broader approach. So we're locally discussing device use and guidelines in our schools here in Barrington 220, but that's just one of seven areas that our advisory group has identified within this strategic objective area. And so some of the work that we're doing in these seven areas, they're multi-year endeavors, right? We are reviewing and revising and considering changes to like our digital citizenship curriculum that takes a little bit longer runway in order to redesign and so forth. But when it comes to device use and guidelines, that particular subgroup, they are looking at and considering, and then would be bringing proposed changes to the board this spring in May. And so this work is not occurring in isolation. As you can see with the images on this slide, we have our advisory committee, which we said from the outset, this is not one that we're going to totally determine in-house. We need a broader perspective. And so this advisory committee you see consists of students. We've actually increased the number of students that are participating in the committee. We have parents, we have community leaders and members of our community. We certainly have our educators, administrators, and board members. You can see Diana is at one of the tables pictured there. So it's a well-rounded group, and we'll continue to work through these different aspects of looking for ways to enhance what we do here in Barrington. But stay tuned for a recommendation in May. And then lastly, we get to brag about students and staff at our board meetings. Tonight, I'd like to take the opportunity to also brag about our board. And so recently, our board was recognized and received the exemplary School Board Governance Award. So the School Board Governance Program, it acknowledges school boards that learn and practice effective governance behaviors through participation and support for board development programs and events. The primary focus of this program is on full board, not individuals, but the full board really committing to that development and participation. Effective, school boards understand that excellence in local school board governance requires full board commitment to obtaining the knowledge, skills, and abilities critical to good governance. So congratulations to our board on earning this designation. And with the designation, you were awarded a plaque, which we will put outside of the board meeting room, which signifies your commitment to that governance. So congratulations. And then I also want to hand out, you received pins for the designation. So we like flair on our lanyards and stuff, so if you're interested, I will pass those out for you. But congratulations, and thank you for all the leadership that you provide to our community.
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome.
Very nice. Very, very nice. I will say that, I'll just add that Barry was recognized that evening as well for his extra hours of training.
That's okay. Hey, part of good governance is head teaming, Sandra. So great minds think alike. And in addition to the full board's recognition, yes, Dr. Altshuler has earned the designation as an established board leader. And Barry, here is your certificate individually for that designation. And, you know, this designation, it does recognize the individual time and effort devoted to learning and leadership. And that's accomplished through participation in various courses, workshops, and meetings. You can see up on the slide, the designation. Since becoming a board member, Dr. Altshuler has earned over 200 points, earning him this recognition. So congratulations personally to Barry as well for your. Now, I actually, you, you made a comment to me about how many districts, I believe, and I don't have that talking point. Do you remember? How many districts were designated?
There were 46 overall, and I think, in the 46 with the state of Illinois, about six in Lake County.
Awesome.
And Illinois has 849 school districts.
Yeah, it's big. It's a lot of districts.
Yeah.
And this is a two-year designation, so next year, we can work on, a year from now, we get a year off.
I want to see more of the little plaques.
Yeah, yeah.
Barry's our taskmaster.
The plaque has the years, so you can continue. Yeah, there is room for more. Absolutely. And that's, we embrace that in 220.
We all participate in it.
And thank you, Jeanne Stark.
Yes.
You're very welcome, yeah.
Happy to organize us.
It was a lot of organizing.
So board, can I ask for you to take a picture together? Since I know some individuals were at Ramadan dinner or other district events that night, you couldn't all be there, but I thought it might be nice to actually, now we have the plaque, it's worth everybody together.
Let's do it.
All right. Oh, and that concludes my report.
Craig, grab a part of that. Will you touch it?
It's not.
Someone do you have a dark one?
Thank you. Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
I'd just like to make one comment on something that Craig said with respect to the cellphone ban. I mean, I support the idea, but I think if you talk to your legislators, let's keep it as local as we can, because every district's different. And if, you know, if they're going to think one swoop, they're going to come up with some, you know, state mandate, it's not going to help all the districts. So, you know, I think, we know our district is already working on this through the, you know, the Digital Citizen Group. And I think we can come up with some great ideas, but to be forced into just a narrow kind of idea is not going to help the whole state.
Right. Yeah, agreed.
All right. Well, next up is information reports. Does anybody have any question about the information reports? All right, let's go right into board committee reports.
Well, I have two reports. So the insurance committee met. We've been meeting multiple times. Again, remember, this is health insurance for our educators and staff, so BEA and BSEO. And we're getting close now to coming up with, you know, a plan for our educators. So the insurance committee reviews favorable renewal projections for the '25, '26 school year, which means the increase, it's not going to be as much as it has been in the last couple of years, which is great. Open enrollment will tentatively be planned, or is planned for mid-May, so we'll have everything final by then. We don't have final numbers quite yet. And the other thing, we just want our staff to know, is starting September 1st, we will be transitioning to prime therapeutics for prescriptions. So that's going to be a little bit different, and everyone's going to have to kind of adjust to make sure their prescriptions are available through prime therapeutics. And again, we're working with the NIHIP Insurance Cooperative. So we're working, we're getting multiple districts together to see if we can get better numbers in terms of, you know, what it's going to be for insurance. So the, when you have larger pool of patients and staff, you can divide up costs a lot more equitably. So it should serve us well. Second meeting that I went to was Safety and Security, and this was last week. So I'll just kind of go through bullet points of things we talked about. Prairie Middle School staff have completed training on run height fight and stop the bleed. And Station Middle School was scheduled to do this in mid-April, April 16th. So both middle schools will have got the same material and the same training. The Safety and Security Committee met on the 13th, and there are several important initiatives that are underway. Ongoing safety assessments and walkthroughs are taking place across our schools. We are always looking at how to keep our schools safe and to make them safer. And when there are events that, you know, might question our safety, we go and we reanalyze to figure out what we can do differently. So, you know, we're learning. It's an ongoing process. At the high school, additional safety measures are being implemented. Further communication will be provided to staff and the community regarding entry and exit procedures, because we really want to get that down where we feel like our school is not a prison, but yet we are safely getting the right people in the school and not getting people that we don't want in the school in the school. Safety Week will continue to be held early in September, so we're planning now for a successful, robust Safety Week. At our next meeting, we will finalize the specific dates and ensure timely communication within, with the community. Work is still in progress to finalize our reunification plan. Again, when we have a worst-case scenario, when we need to get students out of a building, we need a plan, both for our students and our staff, but also for the community. So we're working on finalizing this reunification plan with continued discussions and evaluations to ensure best approach, and we will do a very robust job of communicating to our community when we have something to communicate. Additionally, we're exploring the development of a quick and user-friendly crisis manual. Preferred format is a, like a flip chart that will provide clear step-by-step procedures for a variety of emergency situations. And again, this will be for every teacher, every educator in every classroom, as well as, of course, in the administration building. So those are my two reports.
Thank you.
I went to the Education Foundation meeting last week, and there were lots of interesting and good updates. They are working on updating the business incubator classroom, because it hasn't been updated in a very long time. There's some work going on to figure out what makes sense and what the costs are, but it should be pretty exciting. In the same line, you know, save the date, because there is the Innovation Showcase and incubator pitch night on May 21st at the Barrington High School. The Innovation Showcase is where you can talk to students and see what they've been up to in some of the areas that the Education Foundation has sponsored us. So like the culinary, the horticulture, if I forget one, I apologize. There's like half a dozen of them. And it's super fun to interact with the students, see what they've been doing, hear what they're excited about. And then, you know, I think last year, there were snacks. We'll see what happens this year. No promises. And then you go into the auditorium, and you get to see pitch night for the business incubator, for the projects that the students are pitching, and it's kind of like Shark Tank, you know? And they've prepared, and they've been prepped, and it was pretty impressive last year. It was like, I don't know which ones to pick. And then, you know, it goes from there. So very exciting night, exciting things going on. If you're interested in their golf event, there is a golf event, too, on June 9th at Kemper Lakes. There will be golf, and then there will be like a cocktail hour for the non-golfers. So all good things to raise money that they raise to help our students with special extra things that are amazing.
And just to piggyback on the pitch night, the winning teams, one or two teams, get money. They get financed. So that's, you know, there's something to work for. There's really a kind of a cherry at the end there, so it's very exciting.
So then the next year, they go ahead and they have funding, and they do what their project is. So like, for example, last year, there was a group that made cutting boards for camping, and they were infused with herbs so that they would cut on them and cook like a Boy Skar troop. And then they would throw it in the fire, and it would keep the mosquitoes away. And so that was their business. And I suspect they're very successful. So yeah, that was like one example that I took away. I'm like, that's super cool. So yeah, not to not mention the others, there were many good ones. So, and there will be good ones this year, too. So, and if you want to personally fund the one that doesn't win, go for it, because that happens, too.
All right, May 21st.
Yes. Awesome.
Okay. All right, well, let's move on to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as a presenting?
So moved.
Second.
All right, on our consent agenda this evening are open and closed minutes for March Board, and several finance reports. We have the February reports for wage and payroll, treasurer's report, and revenues and expenditures, and the March bill list. We have a revised personnel report, and we also have the approval of the Illinois High School Association membership. And in that memo, it talks about the changes that were made in the membership this year as well. Any questions for your roll call? I guess not. It's your roll call.
Sandra Bradford.
Yes.
Leah Colister-Lazari.
Yes.
Steve Wang.
Yes.
Katie Carum.
Yes.
Erin Chan Ding.
Yes.
Barry Altshuler.
Yes.
All right, motion passes. We have several action items.
We're going to stop.
Oh, sorry. Don't forget to tell me to pause.
Yep. Good. So based on the board's action, I'd like to formally now introduce Dr. Jordan Anderson as our new Executive Director. Jordan, congratulations on the role, and if you'd like to address the board.
Thank you. I think this is working. Thank you so much. Gosh, when I first started here four years ago, I never thought I would be standing here today for this role. So thank you so much. I cannot wait to get started. I'm really excited to finish the year strong in my current position, but also joining Dr. Liz Wiki and the Student Services Department. Lots of great work ahead of us. I'm really excited to partner with students, families, the entire community. So thank you to Dr. Winkelman, the entire board, all of the executive council. Not to jump into the hashtag, but it truly is the place to be for me. I feel very much a part of this community and look forward to many years here to come. So thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Hasn't been the best day.
Good.
All right. So we do have several action items now that we will get into. Do we have a motion to approve the resolution accepting municipal ordinances exempting Barrington Community Unit School District 220 from the Cook County Paid Leave Ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
All right, let me give a quick explanation.
Sure.
Go ahead.
Okay. So, you know, Cook County passed an ordinance regarding paid leave. I want to thank our villages. We actually have three villages where employees work for District 220, the Village of Barrington, the Village of South Barrington, and the Village of Barrington Hills. And I want to thank each of those villages for acknowledging and providing a resolution. The resolution tonight just acknowledges and solidifies that those entities have all taken action at their village meeting.
So thanks to those communities.
Thank you for the partnership, absolutely.
All right. There's no other questions? We'll go ahead and do your roll call.
Barry Altshuler.
Yes.
Leah Colister-Lazari.
Yes.
Katie Carum.
Yes.
Erin Chan Ding.
Yes.
Sandra Bradford.
Yes.
Steve Wang.
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Great, we have that met as well. All right, now, do we have a motion to approve second reading of board policy? We can read through each one of them individually.
So moved. Second.
Okay, these are all policies we talked about at our last meeting, most of them related to Title IX, except for our Board of Education procedure, which we modified the timing for our destruction of our closed session minutes. Does anybody have any questions or want to review any of those policies?
It was the destruction of minutes, and then I think the board made a decision about retaining the term guardian, was the suggestion, and that has stayed in the policy. Otherwise, it was as before.
All right, so I'll just read through those policies. Those policies are Board 220, Board of Education meeting procedure. Does anybody have any questions or want to review any of those policies?
It was the destruction of minutes, and then I think the board made a decision about retaining the term guardian was the suggestion, and that has stayed in the policy. Otherwise, it was as before.
All right, so I'll just read through those policies. Those policies are Board 220, Board of Education Meeting Procedure, Policy 2260, Uniform Grievance Procedure, Policy 2265, the Title IX Grievance Procedure, Policy 5100, Staff Development Program, Policy 720, Harassment of Students Prohibited, and Policy 7185, Teen Dating Riots Prohibited. All right, so having read through all of those and discussing them in the last meeting, it's your roll call.
Leah Colister-Lazari.
Yes.
Barry Altshuler.
Yes.
Erin Chan Ding.
Yes.
Sandra Bradford.
Yes.
Katie Carum.
Yes.
Steve Wang.
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Do we have a motion to consider the approval of the resolution authorizing intervention in proceedings before the State of Illinois Property Tax Appeal Board?
PTAP. So moved.
Second.
Okay, this is approval we do each year, just as it says, to allow branch to defend an RBCAT at the PTAP or anything that gets raised.
We actually do it every four years.
Oh, every four years?
Mm-hmm, yep. So our, we're going to start getting appeals on 2024, so we're getting ahead of that.
Any questions or comments? All right, let's do a roll call.
Steve Wang.
Yes.
Erin Chan Ding.
Yes.
Sandra Bradford.
Yes.
Katie Carum.
Yes.
Barry Altshuler.
Yes.
Leah Colister-Lazari.
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Do we have a motion to consider the approval of resolution reauthorizing the treasurer's participation in an Illinois School District Liquid Asset Fund Plus?
So moved.
All right, so I don't mess it up. Is there anything you want to show?
It's reauthorizing our participation to continue to invest in the fund, which is actually called out in our board policy. So we haven't done this for some time, but we're on a cycle to renew this.
Any questions? All right, let's do a roll call.
Katie Carum.
Yes.
Sandra Bradford.
Yes.
Erin Chan Ding.
Yes.
Steve Wang.
Yes.
Leah Colister-Lazari.
Yes.
Barry Altshuler.
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Do we have a motion to approve the 2025, 2026 meal prices?
So moved.
Second.
All right, I think Barry, you reviewed these at our last meeting. Let me put it up here.
Increase 25 cents at 10 cents.
Yes.
One cent.
Go ahead.
So, you know, based on some parameters that the government has in terms of how we charge for meals for those students that are paying for the meals versus those that are on free and reduced lunch, we have to adjust accordingly, and of course, with inflation and everything. So lunches will be going up by 25 cents next year, and breakfast will be going up by 10 cents next year.
So that equates to additional $44 for lunch per year for student A and $17.60 for breakfast. So kind of a big year. That's a good number to put in there. All right, if there's no questions, let's go ahead and do a roll call.
Erin Chan Ding.
Yes.
Steve Wang.
Yes.
Leah Colister-Lazari.
Yes.
Sandra Bradford.
Yes.
Barry Altshuler.
Yes.
Katie Carum.
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Do we have a motion to approve that NSLP contract renewal?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, this is the Quest renewal, right?
K3.
We have Quest everywhere now, so it's K8, so it's our NSLP.
All right. Do we have any questions?
If I remember, like, there was some change in the rules that taste could now be a factor in lunch. It's not just who's the less expensive. And there's, you know, the dietary restrictions. So that's encompassed in this, right? If I remember correctly.
Absolutely, that is, that was part of us going out for a request for proposal last year when we went through the process. So this is year two of a five-year contract. We have the opportunity to renew each year, so that, this is just one step of that. And we've been incredibly happy with Quest, of course, at the high school, but now having them in our elementary and middle schools. If you haven't been in there during lunch, you really should. They've got fresh fruit and vegetable bars. You walk in in the morning sometimes, and you smell scones. And it just, it's wonderful to see. Kids are really enjoying it. We're getting a lot of really great feedback. And yes, we were able to taste their food, and they've been doing a really great job.
I'm assuming the parents are happy too.
Yes.
The staff is happy too.
We've received a lot of really good feedback.
It's a considerable change for us.
It's good to share that with the community, right?
Yes.
I can say that personally, I've seen a lot less lunch thrown away for school lunch, and so our household feedback has been very positive.
Good.
And our bill's gone up, so, I mean.
Because the food's so good.
Thanks for that feedback.
Of course, thank you.
All right, let's do a roll call.
Erin Chan Ding.
Yes.
Steve Wang.
Yes.
Leah Colister-Lazari.
Yes.
Katie Carum.
Yes.
Sandra Bradford.
Yes.
Barry Altshuler.
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Last action item, do I have a motion for the Board of Education of Barrington Community Unit School District Number 220 to affirm the administration's suspension of student A and adopt the hearing officer's report from the suspension appeal hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All right, I think the motion pretty much speaks for itself. Let's go ahead and do a roll call.
Katie Carum.
Yes.
Sandra Bradford.
Yes.
Erin Chan Ding.
Yes.
Steve Wang.
Yes.
Leah Colister-Lazari.
Yes.
Barry Altshuler.
Yes.
All right, motion passes. So let us move into our discussion items. First up is the district calendar.
Yeah, I'd like to invite Dr. Rivera and Dr. Byrne. This has been an ongoing conversation as we continue to discuss and consider the 26-27 calendar. Of course, just a reminder, you know, as a district, I think one of the really wise moves we made a few years ago was trying to get ahead of our calendars and provide calendars well in advance for our community. So this is really that consideration for not next year, but the following year in 26-27. That was as much stretch as I was giving you. So hopefully, you're ready. So we have a few updates tonight.
So we reconvene the calendar committee a couple of weeks ago to also create a revised calendar for the 26-27 calendar, which then has a three-day break for Thanksgiving. In that calendar, you'll also see that the school year starts on August 19th, and that it would end on, sorry, on May 27, which would be before Memorial Day. There's also an eight-day difference between first semester and second semester, so this stays within our policy, our board policy regarding that. So that was just a, we discussed that with the calendar committee, and so provided them, and you have that calendar now with that Thanksgiving break, and now with the three-day Thanksgiving break. Also, I provided you with a forecast of what it would look like for 10 years for, in the event that we wanted to move forward with the week break at Thanksgiving. Each of those calendars has 176 full attendance days. You'll see that the election years are reflected in the calendars. Also, you'll see that some of our calendars have the Good Friday, and some do not. That's when Good Friday actually falls within our break, then we don't take that day off. So that's, sometimes, you know, we have to go longer because of that or adjust accordingly. So there are three calendars in there where it actually falls within our spring break. And then all of the calendars, or the majority of the calendars, start by the 18th. Some of them start a little later, which would be the 19th or 20th. And then the majority of them, you'll see, end actually after Memorial Day. There's one that ends before that, which is a 2031-2032 calendar. Also, the majority of our, of those 10 years stay within that 10-day policy. There's only two calendars that do not. That is the 2028-29 calendar, and then the 2030-31 calendar. And those two calendars, there is a 12-day between the semesters, which we've seen before in previous years, but those are the only two.
Any questions regarding those?
So when there's a 12-day difference, is that there's 12 more days in the second semester or the first?
The second.
Second. It's always second.
Yeah, second, yeah, because of the holidays that we have.
Okay.
First semester.
So with the three-day Thanksgiving break instead of a full week, the biggest difference would be starting school on the 19th instead of the 18th and ending on the May 27th instead of May 25th.
Right.
Okay.
So I mean, I think one of the things we were asking for is if this was successful for subsequent years. I mean, just to do it for one year and then go back wouldn't have worked. And you've said, yes, we can make this work. So that's hopeful. But then I'm wondering what our next step.
What's a discussion item? I was pleasantly surprised as well to see that it was sustainable, you know, even staying within our policy, which needs to start out earlier, start the students know earlier than August 8th. Yes, is what our policy states.
Yeah, I think that was a real wise question from the board to ask us to go back and look. We have done that periodically when we're considering changes. So I think that was a really good jumping off point just to see, can we actually maintain the schedule? There is a little bit of variety, as you pointed out, that little nuance when you start getting out to, was it year 31? 2031? Like, there is, but we can do the model. So that was the first question the board had asked of us.
So if we continue, I would think the state law right now says that we cannot have school on voting days, right?
That's correct.
Present.
Presently. But I do understand that perhaps we won't have voting there in the fall at the one school, right? Is that, was that a decision that was made for forever or just for this?
Well, so there's always the possibility that one of our school sites. There have been times when it has moved from some of our school sites to other entities in the community that could host an election. We just received notification that North Barrington Elementary will not be a host site. That particular building has been a host site for elections in the past. So it is, I mean, we do get notification that we are a host. We've also now received, so yes, there is always the possibility, yes.
So it's not for early voting or for Election Day?
Right. Right, because nothing you.
It's not there at all, okay.
And we certainly always advocate, we always, we always ask, can we not be a host site? I think our community has, you know, expressed a desire to not be a host site for safety and security reasons and so forth. So we've always asked, I mean, we've been asking even from when I was a principal almost a decade ago, I would ask, because at that time, Station was also one of the designated sites. But we've been able to have that sustain where it's not an election site any longer. So we're always going to ask. And I do think there is an acknowledgement, certainly this year, honoring that request.
So we're still required to take national election off.
So this has been a hot topic around town. I've got a few questions. So, you know, on the continuity of education, which has been brought up a lot. Like, first of all, so we now have in-service days versus school improvement days. So we've got six in-service days, the four school improvement days. What are the difference?
Yeah, so I can answer that. So the Illinois School Code clearly delineates what we're able to use an in-service day for versus a school improvement day for. And I don't want to misspeak. I don't have the Illinois School Code in front of me, and I want to make sure I am speaking with 100% accuracy. So if it's okay with Dr. Winkelman, I would like to get that language. And so school improvement, which is a requirement that we are expected to do from the Illinois State Board of Education, which requires our staff and our administrators and all school staff to analyze our student data to make instructional shifts in order to improve student learning outcomes. And then in summary, an in-service day, and please note, I'm not quoting the Illinois School Code right now, is an opportunity for us to embed the Illinois mandated trainings that staff are required to engage in throughout the course of a calendar year into those days.
Okay. And I would be curious, and I know we're into year one on this, so obviously, we don't have this data yet. But we've talked about the low attendance rates, the two days of Thanksgiving. I have a feeling we're going to have very low attendance rates on these half-days that are leading up to spring break and other long weekends. I don't know that I know of a lot of people attending on Thursday that I've talked to. So I, I'm curious, I know we don't have the data on that. I guess I'm just saying, I'm worried that the more four-day stretches we have, three-day stretches, half-day in front of this, that it's not really improving our attendance rates on those, on those days. So, and then adding another extra week, I haven't been getting great feedback on it, I've got to be honest. Which is why I know we talked about putting this up to the community, and I, I could just be talking in a bubble, and that's totally possible. But I think it'd be a great thing for, if the board would agree that we should get feedback on this, because it is, does seem to be a big change. In my opinion. I've also heard that people don't, like, they love the August weather. June's iffy, so they don't want to start any earlier, you know? I mean, there's a lot, people take in a lot of factors. They take their summer breaks very soon. So those, that's some of the stuff that I've been hearing from people talking to me.
I think the feedback's been very mixed. So how does the board feel? Would we like to get some input from the community?
Yes, 100%.
And we're not going to please everyone, this is the problem.
I'm sorry?
We're not going to please everyone.
No, we're not.
No.
It was still held before.
We need to ask, right.
You know, but.
Well, I mean.
Be interesting to know.
If we can serve the majority, that would be best.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, and I'm wondering if it'll, if it'll fall different by elementary versus middle versus high school?
Well, I think.
That's happened in the past.
That's a great point. I think we should be very scientific about how we get this input. My opinion would be best to do through at campus. We can make sure we get one vote per family, and we'll be able to aggregate that.
Sure, and we slice and dice it.
Slice it differently.
Yeah, I like that.
Still remain anonymous, we still have that, that data.
Well, and how do we reach out to the people who aren't paying attention and get their input too? Because lots of people are going to say, well, Wade, I missed the moment. Or, oh, I was working so much and I didn't see my email. Or, I know we had some communication glitches this year.
Do, does.
Reaching everyone.
Well, Leah, does every, to your knowledge, does every school send out an email, like, weekly, monthly, to their, to their parents?
Yeah, we do school-based newsletters. Schools pick different days when the Grove Grizzly might come out, maybe different than when Mr. Lobins decides Life on the Prairie is coming out and so forth. But all of our schools provide that. You know, certainly, we do a board newsletter, right? Tomorrow morning, that comes out right after the meetings. We have very intentionally incorporated the calendar discussion, because this has been a topic of conversation in the community, that that's front and center and top of the report of what happens at these meetings. And we can work with our team to make sure that we're really communicating, advertising, making sure, you know, that there's a level of awareness around the form of questionnaire. We can engage our PTOs to help us with that messaging. We could bring that PTO presidents councils and ask that that's part of their agenda when they're meeting, or that it's part of their groups that they communicate with. So yes, we, we can take multiple steps to make sure that the word is out, so that families don't miss an opportunity to participate. When we've done surveys in the past, we've, we've, we've had good attendance rates, you know. I have brought up around this time last year, well, really now we're into March, so I'll retract that. Around February of last year, we did send a community-wide survey about our e-learning plans, and we had over 900 submissions. So I'm pretty confident that we can provide the communication necessary to make sure we engage. And I definitely hear what you're saying about making sure that we do it in a manner that, you know, has the, you know, a scientific base to it. And we make sure that our families, and we're using our database to help drive that, so we really get an accurate. And then we can disaggregate and see, you know, based on the families that participate, are we seeing any trends or differences, you know, between levels and so forth?
So, you know, I know our community has a distrust of surveys. And I'm concerned that therefore they may not respond to the survey. Can I just ask, just the previous survey you talked about, the last meeting, the five essential survey? Are we getting parental involvement? Are you, you know, I'm not looking for numbers, but are we getting a good response to that? Just want to make sure that the families are responding to the survey, I guess.
Yeah, so that's a hard one to answer.
Oh, okay. Put you on the spot.
No, and I just, I guess I want to be clear. I think it's what we ask, what the survey entails, different response rates. I, I am fully aware, I've lived in the community a long time too, that I think there's, I wouldn't characterize it as all negative. I think it's kind of a mixed response rate. As I just pointed out, I think we had a good return on response when we were talking about e-learning days. I would anticipate this topic would also elicit participation from our community.
I would hope so.
Yeah, I would hope so.
Can I ask, because it's been brought up, and you may not have the answer tonight, so I don't expect you to. The 176 days that we're meeting, are we, so we're meeting the requirement. Is that what other districts are doing around us? Are we, I mean, are other districts going to school 180 days and we're only going 170? I mean, or are we in line with the state norm? Again, I don't know that you know what other districts are doing, right?
Certainly continue to look into that. We can only with certainty speak to what Barrington to 20 is doing, but what our practices are not uncommon throughout the state.
Thank you.
Let me make a note of that, and I'll put that in like a weekly report, and we can bring that back for discussion purposes.
Districts, maybe?
Yeah.
If that's possible, if the board wants that, and put that data for reference.
Would that work?
That would be awesome.
At least for the reference districts that we use for a lot of comparable, because it's different what maybe we do here in the Northwest suburbs compared to the whole state of Illinois. We can definitely.
I don't need every school.
Yeah, right?
Two attributes the board's throwing more than just the number of days, but some of the attributes that we're talking about.
Yeah, and Dr. Byrne, can you also comment on the number of days, but also what a day looks like? Is also different, school to school, as far as, you know, the length, block scheduling, who's attending on certain days?
Absolutely. So at, throughout the state, every public school district is required to ensure a minimum of not only a certain number of days throughout the year, but a certain number of instructional minutes. So every school district is required to provide a minimum of five hours of instruction on a daily basis. And which, if you're providing the requirement, you're providing a total of 880 hours throughout the year. And we are, at the elementary level, just for comparison, are providing, in our district, 1,139 hours of instruction throughout the year, which include, is after taking out everything with our Wednesday early dismissals, as well as the implementation of our school improvement days. So we are, I understand and hear the comments, but it's important to note that we are well above the required number of instructional hours.
Can you just say those numbers one more time, please?
Yeah, so the state requires a minimum of five hours of instruction with, to count a full school day, and which in, with a, throughout the year, that equals 880 hours. And at the elementary level, is the data that I have in front of me, we are, after taking out the Wednesday early release, as well as our institute and our school improvement days, we are at a total of 1,139 hours for this year.
I'm also curious to address the continuity of learning question. Are there, have there been comparative studies with school districts? I don't know how many in Illinois have like a whole Thanksgiving week off, or nationwide, in terms of like potential learning loss when you do that versus, or, I don't know if it's negligible. Is there any data or any studies around that? Or, or, you know, having a few more days, a couple more days at the end of the year versus the start of the year, whether there is a, a learning difference, or, you know, in terms of academic data?
Are you talking about at the end of the year, in place of tacking on two days early for Thanksgiving? Or are we talking about on that Wednesday? I just want to make sure we keep that balance between the two semesters.
Right, no, I, I think more so that Thanksgiving week and then shifting that. I mean, I think it's like one, it's one day, it's one or two day shifts, right? From the beginning of the year to the end. If we do, if we don't, if we do the three-day Thanksgiving week versus the full Thanksgiving week, right?
It adds days onto the beginning of the year, as Wes had been proposed.
Right.
You said the end of the year, that's what confused me.
Oh, sorry. So this three, I just meant with the three-day break, it would have been, we would have more days at the end, right?
No.
No, the shift is.
I'm sorry.
Is in the beginning of the year.
Okay, the shift.
At least as it's proposed. Because if we add it to the end, we create more, more days during that second semester, which is part of our policy, that we're always trying to keep the balance between the two semesters. So that's why, at least what's proposed, is to add them to the beginning of the year rather than tack them on during the second semester.
Oh, right, if we had that full week break, right? Those days at the beginning, yeah. I'm just, I'm just curious, is, if there have been comparative.
I don't know if there's a comparative study, but we can look. But that one may be a little bit harder for us to find studies. But we'll definitely, you know, if we can find information, we'll share it.
Has it been more of a trend to have that full week off? In terms of Thanksgiving week, or is it?
I don't know if it's a trend. I think we provided information for context, because it's different for us. We, we have traditionally had the three days off. That was a shift for our community during my time, that I've lived and worked in the district. There was a time when we were only off Thursday and Friday.
Right.
It's probably, I don't know who else, 10 years ago, we started doing like three days? Maybe more than 10? I'll fact-check that one too. But, but, so I, I think that's more common, to see a Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. You know, I want to really highlight that the calendar committee, you know, that's just one point of consideration. And we just were providing the context that, in other words, Barrington wouldn't be leading the way or the first one, but we certainly recognize there are far more districts that have school of some sort during the Thanksgiving week. But there are some examples where they have that. And that was all it was really intended for, was just to provide that context for the board and community that this would not be, while it's brand new to us to consider it, I wouldn't say it's commonplace, but there are examples in the area.
I was just wondering if it, if it had been going on for a while with other districts, like, if there was any kind of a difference with that shift of adding it to the beginning of the year? My, my apologies.
I, I, yeah.
I also think that continuity of learning is about so much that goes into the student learning experience. It's your high-quality staff, it's your high-quality instruction materials, your guaranteed and viable curricula. It's your professional learning, your shifts in instructional practice. It's using data to inform instruction. It's also instructional time. It's all of those things wrapped up into one, so it's really hard to quantify the things that are making an impact, because it's all making an impact.
I do also wonder if like we would get even more creep, to Katie's point, of like, you know, if we had that full week, would people start taking off Wednesday or Thursday for an even longer vacation? Which I know that, I've known some families that are like, oh, we're going overseas for spring break, so we're going to leave Wednesday of this week or Thursday of this week. And so I think that's a, that's a consideration as well. I don't know how we work that into the survey, but, you know. I guess I would be concerned that a one-week break could turn into like a seven-day break.
I think that's.
You give an actual, like a month?
That's a potential, no matter what.
Yeah, it's hard, it's hard to quantify that creep, I know.
But if we're going to survey, if we're going to put out a questionnaire to all, all the families, I think we'd be pretty clear what we're asking.
Yeah, I would highly recommend that we're asking for input on this new concept about a Thanksgiving week.
Right.
Break, and make that clear to our community, that that's what we're looking for, for input. So what I'm hearing, you know, based on the fact that we've looked 10 years out, and it, it is sustainable for us to move to this type of calendar, should we wish to do so. But I'm hearing from the board, making sure that we're surveying the community, getting that greater perspective, making sure that we're utilizing all of our communication tools and strategies to ensure that we're getting a good turnout, making sure that the survey is scientific and that it will provide us the information to really disaggregate the, the information that's collected. And then there was the additional question about looking at, at other districts, we can pull that together. Was there anything else that the board is asking for us to do between now and March 31st that we can work on?
I would just ask, we're going to, when we, when we do the questionnaire, because boards already said they want it, if we are going to include this count, this proposed 10 years, that we mark it like proposed, or, you know, I don't want anybody, anybody taking this to the bank that in 10 years, this is going to be the start date of school.
I think there'd be too much to include 10 years with calendars. I think if we just say we've tried to do it and it works, but we have to start a day or two early in the summer, and then, you know, and just, again, that's, I think that's the question. Do you want to start earlier in the summer and then take the whole week of Thanksgiving? Or do you want to continue starting approximately the 20th and just continue with our three-day? I mean, that's, I think.
I think that's, I agree with you.
So I'm not sure you have to give them all, I mean, if you want to give them these sample calendars for, you know, 26, 27, but I don't think I would give them 10 years worth. I don't think, I think it might be too much.
Okay, so I just wanted to make sure, maybe we just.
That's fine.
Yeah, maybe we just mark what we've got proposed, just in case. Because now we've talked about it, now anybody can request it too. Let's make sure we mark it proposed very well. And then, I agree with you, Barry, let's make sure the trade-off is understood. Clearly understood, especially since we have several different ways during this discussion.
If we give the proposed calendar examples, I would just do one Thanksgiving week one, and then one three-day break one for Thanksgiving. Does that make sense? Just.
That's what I said.
Right, just those two, yeah. Okay, I agree.
Well, and I think it's also important to keep the message clear that, sorry, we're still talking, I'm sorry. But anyway, that, you know, this is the families, and we're asking for your view. There's also the other members of the calendar committee that are sharing their view too, and we're trying to make a decision with the whole community. So sometimes in the past, the community thinks, well, this is what we said, and you didn't listen to us. But there's other members that are participating in this discussion. And so we're listening to everybody, and it, you know, to just kind of make that clear. Because sometimes that comes back at us, and it's like, well, you didn't listen to us, but.
Well, we haven't always been scientific in our survey either.
Yeah. That's why people don't like surveys. I mean, I'm assuming this will go to staff also.
Well, as Dr. Rivera pointed out, part of this process does include our calendar committee, which we very intentionally, I've sat in those meetings, we have representation, because you can't build a calendar, especially being a unit district, without getting that group together so that you can really understand the different needs and perspectives by level. So the calendars that we've been bringing to the board for consideration, you know, for a number of years now, involve that calendar committee. It also goes to Labor Management. So to Leah's point, there are different ways that our staff are engaged. And as Dr. Rivera pointed out, in between last meeting and this meeting, we did circle back to make sure that all of those conversations, having an opportunity to bring this back to calendar committee, took place, and we'll bring this new information back to them as well. So we're making sure that the board's talking about it, we're talking about it internally with both our BSEO and our BEA, and then we'll get a broader perspective from our parents.
And the intention is to publish the survey results or review them, right? The way that we did with the referendum feedback?
Yeah, let, let me work with the staff. We'll design the survey, we'll create the tool, we'll make sure it's representative of what we're interested in. But certainly, once then the survey is communicated and administered, we'll bring that back to the board for another discussion. It's not like we're just going to grab that survey and then we're going to place an action item on, on the board. I would think, at least that's what I'm hearing from the board, that there would be an opportunity to discuss the results. Is that right?
Absolutely, yeah. Now, that's just been a critique in the past, that with, not with, with some surveys, the results haven't been known afterward. But not lately, not lately that I recall.
Right.
It's been a while.
I can't recall we've ever not shared. And then, are we on any timeline to approve the 2026?
We have like a year, right? Just to be one year ahead of time?
Well, we have, I think we agree.
Let's let Dr. Rivera review the rules, because there are some conditions of, from the timing of the discussion of when it comes to the board. But I think we established last time, we have more runway with, with this one, right?
Yeah, so this is for, for two years from now. So calendars, there's a 60-day window essentially, that, from when the discussion is to when we would have action on it. But we are an entire year out, so we still have, we still have time. We're, we're, we're good with time.
But expectation has been that we.
Yes, we try to do them ahead of time, like two years ahead of time, yes.
Yeah, I, I think we're still right in a, in a good spot, that we're honoring the commitment to the community to, to give ample time for them to look ahead at what our school calendar consists of. But I think the ability to have more discussion about this with the proposed change and gather additional input is well worth it. That if we're bringing a calendar for board approval, you know, a month or six weeks maybe later than we would traditionally, I think that's okay.
We brought it actually earlier this year as well, so.
Oh, look at us, we brought it early, so maybe we'll shift it. We won't be that far off. Thank you for pointing that out.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you for the direction.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have another exciting discussion topic on our leases.
Technology.
Running up here now.
Yeah.
We've been, we do have an exciting opportunity.
We do.
Yeah.
Dr. Fall has a short presentation to share with the board that accompanies the memo that the board received last week.
Right. We've lost most of our audience, so thank you for those.
This is exciting.
It is to me. So as we usually do before we start a presentation, just to remind us, the, the devices we use in our district are, they sort of cover all of our strategic plan, Framework 220. The two, though, that are probably the most important are future readiness and personalized learning. And you'll see it as we go on tonight with a shout-out to stewardship as well. So in the past, since I've been in the district about 11 years, we've had, we followed, we've, we followed some specific lease durations. We've kept our iPads for three years, we've kept our laptops for four years. And that has led to very consistent year-after-year pricing. So we're able to enter into these leases, and each year, the board kind of knows what the, what technology's going to cost the district. We've known for several years that 2026, 27, next school year, is the big convergence year, where the three-year iPads and the MacBook Airs, the, both of the leases happened at the same exact time, which doesn't make much difference from a monetary standpoint. It's just, we suddenly, the tech department, have a lot of devices to deploy all at once, which we can do. We have no issue with that, there's just a lot more that year. And we were planning on moving forward, all along with our, our normal, our normal leases, and come up with a proposal for you. We usually come between December and January. But as of this year, Apple didn't have any new devices for us. So I'll give you a little bit of a, a history. Here's a timeline. You can see that Apple used to update their iPads about every year, year and a half or so. And then suddenly in 2022, they came out with an iPad X, which was over two years of not, of not updating. And this, this is how our leases worked out at that time, where we leased whatever the current iPad was for every three years. It just didn't make sense at the time to, to recommend a, an already over-two-year-old iPad. So we were surprised in the last two weeks, when Apple decided to release a new iPad, the iPad 11. And that's why I'm sitting in front of you today, not at our normal time, which would have been back in December or January. And we're also going to talk about our laptop leases as well. Those also get updated about every year and a half or so, and our leases for those have been four years. And we also. And we also have a proposal as well for tonight. So that's why I'm sitting here in middle of, the middle of March, when you usually hear from me much earlier than this. So we asked Apple to give us a proposal on our leases and they came back with a very, some very, very attractive numbers to stay on our typical three-year lease cycle for iPads. So with the number of iPads that we purchased, which is in this case 10,000, they're giving us a $300,000 savings compared to published education pricing. And as we've talked about in the last several years, we also have a lot of iPads that we can sell back to an asset company. And of course, the quicker we can get them back, the higher potential cost we can, they can, the asset company can pay us back, because they'll resell them. So the sooner we get them, the closer to that $781,000 we could get per iPad with our current iPads that we currently own. So as you can see, it's a pretty attractive, it's a pretty attractive deal with iPads and it's a good estimated asset revenue as well at the same time. And because our leases converged, we were able to also get a really nice deal on our MacBook, on the MacBook Air laptops. So with this situation, with the number of laptops that we have and the fact that we have the iPads at the same time, this cost savings came out to about $100,000 compared to the published education price. And then our estimated asset revenue for our current MacBook Air laptops can be as high as around $263,000 if we do, were able to do this now. And again, this is not accelerating the, what we've done in the past, it's keeping with what we've done in the past. It's just that we didn't have anything to propose until about two weeks ago. So again, that's why I'm sitting here now feeling very late in the game, when you've heard from me much earlier in the past. So questions or discussion tonight? Can I ask for clarity? This is for this coming year. Yeah, we, what we do is we usually bring our lease proposals in around January and the leases start on July 1st. So we usually place our order, if the board approves a lease, we'll usually place our order in February to March era. And then we'll get the iPads in time for the next school year. Sometimes they come early enough that we can deploy at the end of this school year, but sometimes we do have to wait until next year, the next school year. But these, this would be a lease that starts on July 1st for the 26, 27 school year. 25, 26, that's what I'm trying to, 25, 26 or 26, 27? It's for next school year.
For fall.
Did I say the wrong, did I say the wrong thing?
25, 26.
25, 26. Yeah, because your header here says leases converge in 26, 27, but it's 25, 26. 26, you are correct, yes. I thought I'd make sure. Thank you Barry, yes. I'm so sorry. I'm, yeah, I'm sorry, we didn't catch that before now. But yeah, it starts for the next school year, yes. Just want to make sure. No, I apologize for that. Okay.
So I've gotten questions in regards to some of the more, well, kind of building on our conversation from a few weeks ago. I've had some questions with respect to students being able to type well, being able to possibly have a laptop. Is the cost for the laptops pretty fixed? Or if we were to order more, we would be able to get a better pricing model, do you think?
That's a good question. I would say that that's probably about as low as they're going to go for a brand new laptop. I can't speak for Apple, but that's already lower than the published education price right now.
Okay. And going back to the whole typing matter, can you remind me what the answer was as it relates to how many keyboards are available at the schools, libraries?
Yeah, so the way we, the way we stock our keyboards, or the way we have stocked them in the past is we always have keyboards available in every library, in every school, for the minimum amount of an entire grade level. So if an entire grade level wanted to do a project, the whole, every student in the grade could, could get a keyboard. Most schools, truth be told, have a few more than, than the minimum number. And then if we're ever doing something where we need more, like in a, in a testing situation at a school, at a particular school, we can temporarily move them, do a test for a week and then move them back. But typically, it's, it sits pretty standard with a full grade, the largest grade level, to make sure every student can have a keyboard available to them at any given time.
So I noticed the keyboard pricing isn't in here. Do, I'm sorry to ask you this off the top of your head. Do you know what the per unit cost per keyboard is? And do we have like a approximate estimate if we were to try to give every student a keyboard who has an iPad?
Sure. If we, it depends on, depends on what type of keyboard that we would offer, whether it be a keyboard case or whether it be an external keyboard that plugs in. I did, I did ask a couple of vendors for that. Keyboard cases are around $99 education price per iPad. But if you wanted to get the plug-in ones, I was very surprised that Belkin offers one for $20. So we would, we'd be able to get $20 keyboards. And this iPad does change from Lightning to USB-C, so we are going to need some new keyboards anyway. So we'll have to use either adapters or purchase new ones.
Okay, so 20 bucks basically times, either 20 bucks or 100 bucks times 10,000?
You're exactly right, yeah.
Okay.
Well, is there a way for, is there a way for parents to be able to purchase, you can go and purchase one of your own, I'm sure.
Sure.
But is there a way to offer that sort of pricing to parents as you switch them over instead of?
Absolutely. I have, I've offered in the, I've offered a memo in the past where I've broken this down and I'll just bring it, I'll just say what we've, we've said before. The three different ways would be number one, just to have parents purchase their own. Unfortunately, if they did that, they wouldn't get the education pricing, because they wouldn't be ordering 10,000 a volume like we will. Another way to do that would be potentially ask which parents, which students would be interested in them, find out what kind of number that we want. We could add that to, and have that be a fee divided by three and maybe do $33 fee per year. And then parents could pay for it over the, over the period of time that, that they have the iPad. And then the other way would be just for the district to buy them all. And that, those last two options, of course, would take advantage of education pricing.
How hard would it be then to launch something like that? Because I, because I feel like the fees are pretty much fixed, I mean, by grade level and by school. But if we were to, is there something simple we could do to give parents an option if they want to buy a laptop using our school pricing? That we would, we would actually procure?
It would not be simple and we have tried that in the past.
Okay.
And it, it's, it's not something that I would have any, I don't have any figures right now about how we would, we would do that. But certainly if it's something you wanted us to look into, we could.
I mean, I'm not sure I want you to look into it, I'm just kind of asking the question, it sounds.
I say keep it simple.
Yeah, I mean.
Keyboards for just a second.
Yeah.
Just to keep into the keyboards, we did at one point in time provide keyboards for every student. And my recollection, please correct me if I'm wrong, was that we had a lot of, there was a lot of maintenance on these keyboards and it took a lot of time, which is one of the reasons why we stopped applying keyboards to every student.
That's exactly right.
And just kept them in schools.
Well, isn't, isn't there like a penalty though, if, if someone damages or loses a laptop? Or I'm sorry, an iPad?
My recollection was way more about the amount of time it was taking all of our students to.
There were a lot of factors at the time and, yeah.
Okay.
I see it, I see it all ways. I understand.
Yeah.
Some students, when we talked to students a few years ago, when we were doing our device study, some students do prefer it, some students don't. I would certainly not want to force keyboards upon students, physical keyboards upon students, but for ones who do, there's three, at least three different ways I can think of.
Can you remind me though, I mean, and not to sound contrarian, I just, I, I, I get, I get feedback that folks can't type unless they kind of self-train. I mean, is that something that we're concerned with? Because I, I will tell you right now, I just want to speak for everybody except my own kid, she can't type.
I can't.
Well, but we had the opportunity to type in classes. I don't think that's something that we do anymore.
I think you're talking about the, like when we were in school, although.
Exactly.
Yeah, I never.
You can use my fingers to type.
Yeah, in, in my case, it was either music theory or typing. I took music theory. I self-taught.
Sure.
So there's lots of, there's lots of different ways. We usually call it keyboarding or text entry.
Sure.
There are many more ways of entering text on an iPad than there are on a laptop. That's one of the things that we talked about. And there's, there's just a lot more options with an iPad. And that keyboard case does make it look a lot and feel a lot more like a, like a laptop, if that's the way the student wants to go.
Yeah.
If I can chime in here as it relates to the Illinois Computer Literacy Standards that were revised by ISB in 2022, are embedded into our curriculum and they're scaffolded standards from kindergarten through 12th grade that we embed into our curriculum, whether it's through our media literacy program, our library media program, our literacy standards, which is baked into not only the computer literacy standards, but also our English language art standards. And the language has shifted a bit to basic computing device. And the skills that students are learning through the standards are keyboarding plus. So the skills that students are acquiring through our curriculum are, are able to be accomplished in multiple ways, through multiple devices, because students are using computing devices. So it can look a lot of different ways.
Sure.
But I just want to be clear that we are implementing the Illinois Computer Literacy Standards in addition to the computer literacy standards, standards that are embedded into our content area curriculum.
Isn't it true too, that students nowadays are a lot more proficient with their thumbs at typing? I, it took me literally years to comprehend that because I'm baffled. I typed like this, like we learned, you know, in the 80s and 90s. But I know, I think Dr. Fuller, you told us a couple of years ago, you typed your thesis with your thumbs.
Yeah, my dissertation on, not, not with my thumbs, but on an iPad, because the iPad keyboard algorithm is, is far more forgiving than a physical keyboard. In fact, we had the, the gentleman who invented the iPad keyboard in the district about eight years ago, after he wrote a book, and he came and explained how that algorithm worked and how he invented the iPad keyboard to essentially be more accurate than a physical keyboard.
I guess a, part of it is us adapting our thinking too, right? That you could have multiple ways of input, we know whether it's a keyboard or the iPad, you know, digitized keyboard on a screen and.
There are many.
How I, how I type a paper is really different from maybe my child and that's probably okay as long as those digital skills are being.
I mean.
Unless, unless a class is doing a project and they're, you know, they're like, we're, you know, we need our keyboards. So I think that's, that's part of my learning process too.
I guess I'm, I hear you, and I guess I'm just concerned because I feel like if you go to a job nowadays, they typically don't issue you a iPad. They issue you either a laptop or a desktop, which would have a standard keyboard. And so, I don't know, I, I, that's my, that's my presumption. I just know that's what I issue my employees, we're that way. And if, if they can't type 100 words a minute, they're going to be behind, because we type memos, we type all sorts of things. If they're using their index fingers or thumbs or both even, they're going to be way behind.
There's lots of ways to get that text entry.
Yes. I guess I'm not following what that means.
Unfortunately, now with AI, they can just speak text things. I mean, I'm just saying, they're, what our kids are going to be offered versus what we did, you know, 10, 20, 30, 40 years ago, totally different. So.
I just want to keep, try to keep this on track.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I, well, I guess I'm thinking about this because we're going to have this renewal. Like, do we want to either add on to it with like getting every kid in, what is it?
Keyboard case.
Thank you, a keyboard. Or do we want to consider, you know, doing leases of, of, I'm sorry, what are these called? MacBook Airs? And I get it, it's a humongous cost relatively speaking.
Well, I want to, I want to clarify. So we have a couple cycles that we utilize as, as a, as a district, right? Tonight, we're talking about one of those cycles, which is about leasing of devices, right? There's also the curriculum review cycle. And as Dr. Fuller pointed out, we also have a cycle where we look at the device and we do a full device study. I would think we would be leapfrogging if we're going to try to determine the type of device without doing the study based on a purchase. So if there's an interest from the board around the device, I think that's a conversation that we would enter when we're actually doing the full study, not trying to determine that at, at this time. I understand the practicality. With that said, I think there is the possibility, if there's an interest around keyboards, that we could look at something as an interim between the purchase that's in front of you tonight and the next device study as kind of a bridge. Because we have had those conversations in the past. So I think those are, to be very clear, two very different things, right?
You're, and you're right, we definitely had the device study, at least during my tenure. Yeah, it's within the last four years. I just don't remember when it was. And is, and what, what is the cadence for those device studies? Is it every, how many years?
We, the reason we did that one was because we had not done one since the Wonder World program had started. So it was about five or six years since the full rollout.
Okay.
And then now we've done it, now we, the last time we did it was, I'm trying to remember what the year would have been. It would have been 2021, I believe, because we, we then presented that several conferences and.
Okay.
Device study's been out in the world for a while now.
So it's not a standard cadence, you're saying? It's only, is it, I guess I don't want to put words.
About every five years, every four to five years is what we've been doing.
Okay. So I guess we're kind of due.
And we can adjust it based on, you know, is there a new technology or consideration that we want to roll that forward and do it sooner, right? I mean, we've kind of been on that four or five years because that's made sense with the type of devices that have been introduced. But the rapid change, there, you know, there could be another update or another device that's introduced that really helps our students with instructional technology. But what I'm hearing tonight is that, you know, if we adopt this lease cycle, we know then we're on that three years and some point during the three years, we could do another device study to position ourselves to really thoughtfully consider if we want to make changes. I'm just, I'm a little nervous right now about mixing those two things without doing a full study. I think that'd be premature, but if the board's interested.
You're right.
We could look at doing that device study during this, this lease cycle.
You know what? I didn't read this carefully then. I know you gave us a sample. Is there a, is there an option for cancellation of the lease mid, you know, within the, within the timeframe? Is there like a penalty? I don't recall reading that part of it.
I, we've never considered that. Sarah, do you have any information on that?
I would have to look through the lease documents that we would be adding an addendum to or a schedule to.
Okay.
I'm sure that there would be a penalty if that was an option.
Yeah, okay.
Why wouldn't we consider for this one, offering the, I know standard, you said it came with problems, but I got to be honest, I'm not sure how many parents would take advantage of it. But offering the ability to purchase the keyboard.
Right.
We could make that an option for parents.
Or look into what they would table anyways.
Give them a fee and charge it over three years.
Well, I guess.
We could do, we could do the charge or the, or just the, the one-time purchase.
Whatever works easiest, I would assume. I, out of curiosity, given the fact that this ends at, in theory, the end of the school year or the beginning of next year, are you, from, from a getting our money back standpoint, are you going to send all the current iPads home with these kids over summer school? Our summer? Are we going to try to do this?
It depends. Well, remember, there's.
I know kids are going to.
It's a double-edged sword. So we, we, the students keep their iPads over the summer anyway. And the sooner we can get our current iPads to the asset company, the more we'll get back for them.
Right.
We don't know when these will come in. We don't know if we'll even have time to issue them before the end of this school year. We always try to do what we can, but we may have to, depending on when they actually get shipped.
I'm asking, are we required to let these kids take these home over the summer?
Oh gosh, no.
Send them home with nothing and give them something new on.
We're never, never required.
Yeah.
We, for parents who want, who don't want their kids to have iPads over the summer, if they don't have summer school, we store them in our buildings, our LTA's. We've done that every year for any parent that wants us to store it over the summer for them.
Would, would you do the same thing for a kid that's transitioning from elementary to middle? And just give it to the middle school? Is that how it works?
We keep our iPads for three years. It doesn't matter what the transition is.
Yeah. No, 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 but you're saying that you would hold it for a student over the summer. But like, for example, I have a child who's going from fifth to middle. Would you, would you then have the child deliver it to them?
We'd be able to figure that out.
I have a cost savings question. Is the reason why we get $300,000 savings on top of the education, published education prices for the iPads and not the MacBook Airs, is that just the sheer quantity? Because it's 10,000 versus like 1,500?
Yeah, it's $30 per device.
Oh, okay. And just because we're, we lease, we lease so many, that's a.
I have a feeling that, that is a big part of it.
A big part of it, okay.
And the fact that we're doing two leases at the same time.
Got it. And then the MacBook Airs, they're primarily for, like, are they like computer science classes that would use them and?
Great question. Primarily for staff, actually.
Staff and us.
And the board. And, but we also do have a large number at our high school for, and you're exactly right. It's computer science, it's art classes that use Adobe Suite, and also some of our journalism classes that use it.
And so those students often have the MacBook Air and the iPad. And so those students often have the MacBook Air and the iPad, right?
Those students are two to one during the time that they're in those classes, yes.
Okay.
Do you have any concerns since they came out with this just two weeks ago that they will deliver to us before the school year?
I don't know what their current stock is, but they are, it's a new product, so I have a feeling they probably have enough to start shipping them at least. So I would, I would assume, but we haven't placed an order yet, so I can't pin them down on that.
Come on, don't you know everything? Teasing, thank you.
So I think the, the question in front of the board is, and I want to, I want to thank Dr. Fuller for, you know, working hard to try to present an opportunity to the, to the board, right? So I think the question is, do we want to move forward with the ability to purchase, you know, these devices and enter into that lease agreement? And then I'm hearing there's some follow-up work that our team can also do. You know, this was a pretty quick turnaround for Dr. Fuller's department, but we can do follow-up work as far as the keyboard option that I'm hearing in some form. Let, let Matt work with his team and bring some more information back to the board and community on that option and then allow Dr. Fuller's team to also think through the logistics. They, they do this annually very successfully for us and I have confidence that they will be able, you know, we're still, it's March, we still have time to, I think I heard you say that you're not concerned about us being able to do the change over.
Our tech team's amazing though, we'll pull it.
Okay, and we'll bring those logistics back to the board, but to ask more from Dr. Fuller right now, I'm not sure it's going to be, there's still some unknowns. It's really, the question is about the lease opportunity that's in front of us this evening.
Kudos to you for jumping on this. And obviously, it's just been a couple of weeks and you, you know, you've really done the due diligence.
And the financing was desirable too, which I think you displayed on, on the screen. I don't know if you touched upon it.
I didn't say it, but it is 0% APLO.
Yeah.
You know, estimated asset revenue of between $700,000 and $300,000. This is fantastic.
Well, can I just float a crazy idea then? So we have a lease to buy option here, if I read that right. So we can buy them.
All of our leases have always been, we own at the end, yes.
Right. So could we take, I mean, is it, it's within our, I don't want to say it's rights, but it would be within our purview to, as a board, and Zed, I'm looking at you too. I mean, would it be within our, like, span of control to say, you know what, we don't want to do a new lease right now? We just want to, because these things won't go out of service, right? I mean, they can still function with them for another year. We own them and we can take some time to really consider, do we want a new lease? And granted, I understand we'd be risking, you know, this offer from Apple, but I don't know if that's something that we want to think about. I'm just floating that idea. I mean, for us to chew on between now and I guess June, right?
Can you say that last part again? I didn't hear you.
Just kind of floating the idea of not renewing the lease
Not renewing.
And keeping the devices that we have, because they're not going to be obsolete in the year, but it would buy us a full year to really in earnest, think about what we want to do from a student development standpoint, typing, technology, all that.
You read an argument in your memo though, why this is a good time to do it, why not waiting a year? So
Oh, yeah, yeah, please push back.
Sure, if we wait a year, we're not sure what the pricing will be at that point.
Sure.
We'll also be probably buying the exact same model in a year, which means that we'll be delaying when the, the model that comes after this with whatever features that it adds, we're delaying that for a year. And the biggest issue really is that asset cost, because we're going to take a big hit on that. Three years has always been our sweet spot. We've, we've, we've gotten between 20 and 30% back from our original, our original purchase price. If we wait another year, it's, it's going to be considerably less than that.
But you would also have the cash flow savings of not paying that, I mean, what was it? 1.5 here and 300. So call it $2 million, just short of $2 million in cash flow that we wouldn't expend. So offset by what, you know, like you said, what is it? Did you say $30? Was that right? Per, I'm sorry, $55 to $84 per unit or 117. So, I mean, it would be, let's call it the high end, you're going to get 900,000, 900, let's see, 900, about a million dollars in revenue back, but you'll also save that million dollar, $2 million in costs approximately. So net, net, you're still coming out ahead of time and you'll still be buying that year, right? And I would think that because we are a, you know, trusted partner, maybe, maybe you could work your magic and get us a similar deal down the line.
Wow.
I don't know, I'm not saying we should do this, I'm just, I'm just throwing this out there.
Wrapping up this point, so.
We have time.
Do we have, do we have four board members that want to consider that? Delaying the lease?
Well, what's the sequence? Are we coming back next meeting and voting?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, the pricing is guaranteed at this time, but it would be, it would be April 4th. April 4th. So it would be board action on the March 31st meeting to be
Right, okay, that's right.
The timeframe.
Actually, we don't have any interest. We want to consider this, this lease at our next meeting? Go for some head.
I mean. I mean, it's hard.
Reform with what's been presented.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I hear what you're saying, Steve, but I'm concerned that we're just putting off the inevitable by a year. So we're getting less on the return side and you're just pushing the million off by a year, in theory, correct? I mean, lease terms will have to start over again then a year from that time. So you might not get those prices.
You, you may not, but you might, you might as well, yeah, I mean.
I hear it, I mean.
I don't know, I guess we're in a public meeting. I don't know what kind of leverage you have, but.
I don't want to put Dr. Fuller on the spot.
Yeah, I don't either. I'm, I'm just kind of
For Apple, he clearly has, I think, demonstrated that he's worked very
Of course.
Effectively to try to get us the best pricing for tonight, but I don't want to have him further promise
Yeah, no, I know.
The ability to do that. You know, I don't know what the future holds or what pricing will be. We've got a proposal that's, you know, date stamped for April 4th. That's, that's really what's in front of the board tonight. I appreciate different ideas and options as always, Steve.
I guess what I'm just thinking is you can save the, call it 900,000 in cash flow in the next fiscal year. And then, you know, maybe you don't have the guaranteed outflow of, what is it, like 1.9 million or so? Maybe it'll be 2 million, but we still have that $900,000 savings in the next fiscal year that you can spread out over the next couple of years. So there is that bit of additional cushion you can factor in. And I don't know, just thinking from a time value money standpoint, I'd rather have that $900,000 savings today and be able to attribute it to future years rather than, you know, try to attribute it to future years, knowing that we're not going to have, you know, exactly the same deal that we have today.
Not having a crystal ball in front of you, even though I wish I did. We don't know what's going to happen in the world month by month this year. This seems like a very reasonable proposal in alignment with what we've done before. And if circumstances become dire, that we may have to cut our budget in a lot of different ways, not that.
That's fair.
I think we should move forward with this at this point.
Okay, I mean, I defer to you guys. I mean, I don't.
I like the revenue that we get and I like the prices that they offer. So I'm in favor of moving forward, so maybe just go down the line here. You're, you
I'm torn, so I would say, I would say I'm okay deferring.
You're ready to move forward?
Or moving forward to a vote, so I mean, we're not making a final decision right now.
Right.
That's right.
Yeah, we're not making a final decision.
Let's move this lease proposal forward. It is, I appreciate the idea too. I think it is risky though to, you know, because we don't know.
But it might explain this, right? Like, so I'm just taking the, I'm taking the cost and adding it together, right? So the annual lease payment for the iPads is, call it 1.5 mil, plus the 329,000 for the iPads, so call it 1.8, 1.9 mil. If we call it avoid that next school year, that's $2 million in cost savings. But you also, let's say, lose the entire revenue, which is between, call it 780 for the iPads and 263 for the MacBooks on the high end.
Yeah.
Yep. Yeah, so let's call it a million. So we lose that million, but we have that 1.8, 1.9 million dollars of savings. So net, net, we're saving $80,000, right? You guys with me so far? So then, let's say we go back to the table.
Assuming the prices stay the same.
Well, it's going to stay the same for now, right? Because we're, because we're going to, because we're going to avoid, we're not going to get that $900,000 in revenue, but we're also not going to expend that 1.8 million dollars in cost.
1.8 is not guaranteed.
Understood, understood. But what I'm saying is that's money that we're directly encumbering for the next fiscal year.
Due to the double lease convergence if we wait a year though?
Yeah, I would say so, right? Because you're just delaying a lease overall. We own the devices that we currently have, the kids can continue using it, admin, us, we can continue using the ones we have, right?
We would be asking for another year of life. I think we have done this before, so we'd be asked, we'd have all students and all staff on an extended year. So we'd have a lot, I would assume, you saw, how much more repairing would we have to do?
There would be repairs, it would be battery, it would be all, all the things that would happen with another year on a device. And, and again, the asset cost is going to go down because of that and the use of the devices. We've never kept iPads for four years. I can't tell you how they're going to, how long the battery's going to hold out. Can't tell you if we're going to be okay with storage. There's, there's a million factors that I can't address because we've never done this before. And you're just looking at it seemingly from a cost point of view, but there are more issues than just cost.
Well, it's fair. I mean, I will say that I'm not factoring in annual maintenance, because we, we probably haven't captured with an Apple Care, right?
I'm sorry?
We have maintenance right now covered by Apple Care, is that right?
Apple Care is on this lease, but they did not offer Apple Care when we purchased, so.
So we're doing the maintenance ourselves right now?
We're paying for all of the repairs currently, yes.
Do you know approximately how much that is annually?
I'd have to get all of that information for you. That's not something that I've ever included on a lease, on a lease situation.
Sure.
But if you look at the monthly treasures reports.
Yeah, I know, I gotta, I gotta look at it.
Given to Apple and I'm told that's mostly maintenance, so it's, it's not a small amount.
So, but, but so that, if that's the case, that's a sunk cost then, right? Because it would just be in our run rate for next year as well. So we would budget for that, wouldn't we?
Well, the Apple Care agreement is new
Sure.
On the new lease, so that's not something we've ever been able to, to budget for.
Correct, but what I'm saying is we are, we would already have that budgeted for next year, or did we, or Ms. Lager, did we already budget for Apple Care next year?
That would be part of the tech and innovation budget.
No, it's not Apple Care. We're paying ourselves for it.
Right, I understand. What I'm saying is what do, what do we have in for the next calendar year budget? Do we have, do we have already in the, what we went over in the committee of the whole, do we have Apple Care assumed for next fiscal year? Or do we have the same run rate that we've had historically for maintenance that we do internally?
I do not understand your question, I'm sorry.
So we're saying that we pay, I'll make up a number, a million dollars a year in maintenance costs for our iPads and our MacBooks, correct?
That's a very high number. I don't know if the number is right now.
Well, regardless, call it $100. Are we, is that in our budget right now?
Our, yes, we do have a repair budget that we do have.
So for, so for the 25, 26 year budget, that's in there? Yes?
Yes.
Perfect. So even if we, I don't know, I guess the question would be, even if we double it, what kind of burden would that put on us? And I think that's the sensitivity analysis we probably want to do to understand, you know, again, we have this cash flow savings, right? Because we're not going to renew the lease in theory. We're also not going to get the revenue, so I'm netting that out. I still think we got some, right? Even after, even a four-year or five-year asset, we're going to still get something back, right? Or, I don't know. I would assume we will get something.
I'm not going to promise anything.
Sure, but I would assume we get something back. It's not a complete loss, but let's just call it a complete loss. Okay?
Okay.
I do think there's some upside here, I guess is what I'm saying.
So let me, let me throw out an alternative. Like, I, I am not in favor of, of having both the iPad Airs and the iPads at the same time at an extra year, right? If we want to think about doing a trial on some iPads, keeping them a fourth year, then I might be in favor of something like that, but not the whole lease here. And let's plan it out, do it thoughtfully without, not this 11th hour is what, that's what I would propose.
Yeah, I, there is definitely, I mean, Steve, you're making really good points around the finance side, but I also, because we don't have experience with this, I would want to have more information about, you know, is there going to be downtime? Is there going to be instructional time lost? Is there going to be a lot of, you know, exchanging of devices? Is there going to be complaints about my iPads not getting me through the school? There's, there's a lot of unknowns that I'm not sure what that would mean for us beyond the finance of it.
Well, I guess what I'm getting at too though, and I guess I say this respectfully, my iPad at home, my personal one, it's like nine or 10 years old. I think I have an iPad too. It's still functioning.
Expecting to be learning with the updated
Yeah, but I'm, my point is, my point is
We're getting iPod 11 over iPod 9.
The point I'm trying to make is, I don't think a year is going to make that big of a difference. I guess I'm no expert, but I don't think a year is going to make that big of a difference.
Unfortunately, our kids
And I'm not even saying
We're in terror.
Sure. And, and by the way, I'm not even saying this to save money. I, I actually don't think this is a matter of, the, the thing that I'm more concerned about, because I don't want to be in the situation Ms. Lager just mentioned, where we have to buy ourselves out of a contract, because, you know, down the line, we're saying we do have a better option here.
I, I think that's presuming that
That is presuming that we have a better option.
Are going to be a different option, which I don't know if any of us right now, today would be able to accurately predict what
That's fair.
Study would be, because I think we go into those studies with eyes wide open and there have been times where we've made adjustments from one device to, to another. And I would want us to just go into that study with that expectation, not an expectation of, well, we made some financial decisions and that in any way is influencing our ability to look at devices just for the sake of learning.
Well, let, let
Are they meeting our
Let me, let me clarify, this is actually zero based on a financial decision. This is all based on, the first point I brought up, which is, I feel like kids can't type, I feel like they're relying on their iPad. And I'm not sure that, I'm no expert here, to be honest, but I just know the feedback I've been given. I don't know that that's preparing them for what they need to do after graduation.
You're talking about switching devices for students?
I'm not even saying we have to, I'm just saying we, typing is an issue. I, I will just say that much.
How would not renewing the lease address the typing issue if there was
Wants to do all studies.
Because maybe we do all, maybe we do all AirBooks. Yeah, maybe we don't, or MacBooks, excuse me. Maybe that's what we end up saying, because it is more powerful. It costs a lot more, and we can factor that in. I mean, I, I get it, we'll multiply the number by ten.
Study on this?
Yeah, you did a study on this, the Chromebook, and one other thing, I can't remember now.
Four years ago.
Yeah.
Can you just maybe send us that study again and have us
The study was pretty succinct. Maybe the conclusion of the study as opposed to
Summary.
This most, you know, that would be fine. But, but, but I, I think one of the things that we have taken out of the discussion is that you're gonna be looking into, um, keypads.
Yep.
So, you know, I mean, we are trying to hear what our community said, but still work with the best technology we have.
Yeah, and I think we're agreed. I agree with everything that's been said at, at the table, but I think the notion of buying a, a MacBook versus an iPad to address a need for typing skills, um, I think that's a very cursory view of this, as, you know, Matt and his department provided last time. One of the reasons we moved away from our students having MacBooks was that there was different modalities for them to learn and, and be able to input information that the iPad afforded that the MacBook didn't. You can do a keyboard, and you can get different versions of keyboards with an iPad that very much mimic, but you can't have a MacBook do the input that an iPad provides for our students. And so I just, I, I'm concerned of making a large-scale decision around the way that our students learn and ways that we address the standards that Dr. Burton mentioned around a concept of typing. That's one aspect. And even if we make a device decision, then we gotta also think about, what are we not offering in our curriculum and instruction in order to embed more typing skills? And I think that's another decision point we would need to make, right? Because the, the, the day is packed with different things, and I'm hearing, you know, that we're gonna change the device, and that's going to then be an entry point into our kids are gonna have better typing skills because we changed the device. I think that could be one way to do it, but I also think I would wanna have more conversation and really understand more about that topic before we jump into it from a leasing conversation.
Well, and you need to consider ages. A kindergartner is not gonna be walking around with this. I mean, it's not gonna be, you have to consider the differences between elementary school, middle school, high school, so I don't know that it's an answer for everyone either, because I cannot see the younger kids.
And maybe the answer is like, we give to every high school kid. I don't know. I mean, that's, that, that, that's what one parent actually told me a long time ago.
Potentially moved away from that.
Going backwards. Steve, that's actually what we did. Our high school students used to have a MacBook, um, and then based on the last study, because of the different ways that we were able to, uh, have our students learn how to input information, we moved to the iPad because it was, it afforded that. Now, I'm not saying it, it can't change or swing back or whatever, but I'm just, a lot of the things that you're bringing up have been contemplated, and it really went through that device study cycle versus about the device itself. I guess I, I just wanna make sure, we kinda called the question, and then we spent another twenty-five minutes after the question was called on this topic. I just need a little bit of direction from Florida. How am I working with the staff? Are we moving forward to put this on? Again, we're not making a decision tonight, but are we moving forward with putting it on?
Let me try it again as an action item for consideration. Moving forward, leases presented with an action item at our next meeting.
I think you've gotten towards some stuff.
Yes, I'm checking again, Barry.
Okay.
Okay, now with that direction, I'm also hearing, and we will, you know, be able to then provide more information about I've heard, you know, keyboard options. That can take different forms, as Dr. Fuller pointed out. We'll, we'll be able to provide more context with that and more options around keyboards, uh, certainly than what Dr. Fuller provided tonight. And then I just wanna clarify this point. I think there is interest around, is this the right device? You know, how do we get after maybe some of the, the skills? What's the right age level? Are there gaps in what we're providing? I think I'm hearing from the board, the interest of, if this moves forward, a commitment that our team would be planning in their work during this lease cycle to do a device study, um, so that we have the ability to do a full study and bring that back to the board before we're faced with another, another lease cycle.
Maybe before we make that decision, can you provide us the study that we did?
Can I just point out, it's online. If you go to the, um, Technology and Innovation, click on Tech Support, and then go to Research, the, the whole study is there.
As we make our decision
You can read the whole proposal.
Everybody's been pre-educated, studied what we did before.
Absolutely.
Decided when we're ready.
All right. Thank you for the direction. Appreciate it, board.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so, um, we have reached the end of our discussion items. The board does need to go back into closed session. So we, we're, we're adjourned for now, but we're gonna, um, head back into closed. Thank you all.